Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on May 27, 2025, and ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. I will ask Commissioner Smith to do the invocation, please, and then we'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for your grace and goodness. May your face continually shine upon us so that your ways may be known in our communities. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
All right. First thing up, we have public comments. We have a few people here that want to make public comments. And before I call the first one up, I just, just a couple of reminders. Please state your name and address when you're up here for us, if you would. And you are limited to three minutes. And please keep decorum at all times. And so the first one, welcome, by the way. And the first one is Robert Dotree Dot. Did I say it? I'm sorry. I'm sorry? Doherty, I apologize, Robert. Come on up. Good.
We went to the other city council meeting, and they wouldn't let us say anything. And the rescue people there that rescued us evacuated us by boat. They was in water up their chest, bless their hearts. But if the flood hadn't have come, I wouldn't have had to have emergency surgery. They thought about taking my foot off because floodwaters went inside my foot. And they said you had plenty of time to evacuate. I live right across the road from Clark River. Clark River was six foot from Crest. Didn't ever dig Crest. So, and so what caused the flood? That's what we want to know. There's 30 families out there lost everything. FEMA denied us everything. Said we didn't fulfill our end of the bargain of keeping flood insurance. I knew nothing of flood insurance. I had just come through a tornado and lost everything in Mayville, Kentucky. Lived in a motel for third or four days with my service animals at somewhere else for 50 days. And we got that place over. Nobody said nothing about flood insurance. Nobody said it was in a flood zone. Now, we've lost two. We had two foot of water inside our home. We've been living in a motel ever since I got out of hospital. We're going home tomorrow. The home's not even ready. But I'm tired of living in a motel. I'm tired of all of our stuff being destroyed with no excuses from nobody and no help. I mean, if it wasn't for Emergency Management Company putting us in a motel and taking care of us, I don't know what we would do. So only thing I'm just suggesting is they need to have better communications with the people that live out in the county. Lot of us don't have. I don't. I live on a disability check every month. I mean, I can't work. They won't let me work. My wife disabled. She worked 31 years as a nurse professor. She can't work no more. We don't have no money just to pack up and move away. So, you know, better communication from everybody would work out great for some people. And, I mean, that's really all I can say. I don't know what else to say. I've lost everything. We had two foot of water in there. We got our refrigerator working, but it's making the dirtiest racket you ever heard. We just put $240 worth of groceries in our deep freezing refrigerator the day before the flood. And we lost everything. So, I mean.
I thank you for being here. I appreciate your input. And we've gotten a lot of input from people after the flood event. And all of those are being taken under consideration. So thank you for being here.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Joe and Kathy Burkhead? I apologize. Burkhead, thank you. Yes, sir.
First of all, don't include this on my three minutes. It hurts my heart to be up here, I'm telling you. I'm very anxious about this, and I spoke hundreds of times in front of people. But I look to my right, and I see friends. I see people who are committed to public service. And nobody appreciates that more than I do. I love this city. Love the city of Paducah. And it hurts my heart to be up here in what I'm afraid will appear to be a bit of an adversarial position. But the people, something happened on April 5th and 6th that caused many residents in the Island Creek Basin to suffer much heartache and great expense. That was one right there. Many folks don't understand what happened. 95% of the people that come up to me and say, "Well, I understand the city opened the floodgate and flooded you guys out." I'm like, "No, that's not what happened." The city closed the floodgate and flooded us out. So if you do understand what happened, but you don't want to acknowledge it, or it appears to be so. So I'm here to talk about what really happened so we all have a common and accurate understanding. I'll do my best to. I may have to fly through posters. But I'll do my best. I hope you all will stay with me in the interest of, you know, getting some answers for all of us. So I'll show this. By the way, everybody you have a packet has the exact same thing. So just so we all understand. I'm sorry, I can't show them. Well, ladies and gentlemen, so water, we are part of the Island Creek Basin. 150, 200 rest.
Mr. Burkhead, if I could just excuse me for just a minute. I mean, I can only give you three minutes. So I'm just.
Fly through it.
Okay.
Can you defer somebody else's three minutes to me? I mean, that's what Congress does. Look, Mayor, if you really want to, if you want us to work with you, I told you, I've got my, I've got everybody's best interests at heart. Please hear me out.
Okay.
Please hear me out. And I'll do my best to get through in three minutes. And you don't have that many speakers tonight, so we're not going to tie you up long. Island Creek Basin, part of the, this is part of Island Creek Basin that was flooded at 50 feet. All the rest of it is dry. That results in a 15 to 1 runoff. A 15 to 1 runoff for every inch of rain, we got between a foot and a foot and a half of accumulated water in this entire basin. There are only two ways that water can go through or get out of Island Creek. One is Island Creek Basin. One is Island Creek. And the other is the bypass around Island Creek, which Corps of Engineers built. I did a lot of calculations as an engineer on that culvert. And then I realized, wait a minute. We're talking Corps of Engineers here. They got the best engineers in the country, the world. I don't need to redo their work. This is big enough, but it was plugged. And my neighbor is going to talk a little bit about that. Two ways it can get out. This was 95% plugged. One way it could get out, through the gate. This is the gate at Husman Road. So that's a little more than equal. If I don't get any further, Mayor, this is the single most important poster I can put up. And it's the second one in your old deck. I highlighted this before I review what happened on Saturday afternoon. There was an event that happened sometime between Saturday afternoon and Saturday early evening. When I went to bed, the Waterski Lake was well within its banks. It was high because we were having a localized deluge, but just normally high. And something happened between here and when I got up to go to church Sunday morning, water was two inches from our lower level floor. Continue to come up all day. I have a personal flood wall. I have my own personal flood wall that immediately protects to 50. Our patio was 50.9 on the river gauge. And my flood wall will protect over 53 feet, which would handle every flood but two in the last 17 years. Three, I'm sorry, 18, 19, 11. And then if you'll notice on that chart, like 12 feet, I think that's about the height of that ceiling. That's how much higher the Ohio River was, I mean, the Island Creek Basin was than the Ohio River when this floodgate was shut. The floodgate was apparently shut at a river level of 40. Just had crossed out a minor flooding. Was not even close to the moderate flooding stage. Yes, the forecast changed. But the city put out a series of bulletins day after day saying that the basin, I'm sorry, the gates would be positioned to have in place by Monday morning. They never mentioned the gate at Husman Road. Never mentioned it. If you guys know otherwise, show me that they didn't. I checked with four of the top managers in the county. And the county, all four said that they not received no notification of this floodgate being closed. There are people who know what happens when you close that floodgate and the bypass is also plugged off. We flood. It's a flash flood. So I would have had time personally to save my belongings easily in 24 hours. I had, you know, 20, 25 people I could call on. But I tried my best to get ahead of it. I couldn't get ahead of it. It came up so fast. It's coming at four inches an hour. So by Sunday afternoon, it overran my flood wall. I couldn't get the extension put on in time. If I had 24 hours' notice, I would have been protected to 57 feet. I'm lucky. Several people out here and several people have been here. I've got two more floors to live on. We can afford this. I don't like it because it's emotionally, after 2011, it's beyond. You can't imagine unless you've been through it. And there are people out here that don't have a place to live. You just heard from one. There are people on Badger Lane that don't have a place to live. So here's what happened. This is where the floodgate was closed, somewhere in this neighborhood. I've got 7:00 PM. This is, these are the numbers I had. So the river was 40. Actually, it was at 40 when it was closed, which was apparently 3:00 PM. We found out from the person that actually operated the gate. And the Island Creek Basin was at 48. It went from 42.6 to 51.4 by 7:00 AM, before we ever saw it coming. This was into my lower level, right at lower level. I actually had dropped the wear-in by this time. I got up at daylight, looked down as I always do. By Sunday evening, 12 feet difference. 12 feet difference. I mean, there was no danger from the river at all, yet we were flooding heavily. If you look at this chart.
I'm going to have, need to wrap it up, please.
Anybody else want to hear what's going on? I'm just saying, I mean, do you want to know what happened?
You can.
I'd like to know what happened, but at the same time, there are.
How do you want us to present this to you?
Probably set up a separate meeting and come down and talk to us.
That's my last, that was the last thing I was going to say. I want, I want to do more than talk. This is not on us. There is not a soul in Island Creek Basin who spought this water. I'm trying to point fingers at any of y'all. Y'all are, I mean, Mr. Jordan, I know you're new, a year maybe?
Almost four.
Four, sorry. But I know a lot of y'all, and you are on commission. Mayor, you haven't been in the mayor's position forever.
Five years. Five years.
Pardon?
Five years.
Five years. So you went through, you have not been through a major flood until this one. Here's where it stands. 55 in 11, 53 in 2019, 51 and a half in 18, 48.4 in 20, and 48. Never even got to major, didn't get close to major flood. And the thing is, this 48 is actually down here at 40 when we flooded. It's way off into the chart. So let me make some closing comments. I'll skip the rest of them. We saw the most important one. There was no reason, there was no warning given to the residents of Island Creek. Basin rose over three feet by daylight Sunday morning. This is one minute, guys. And six feet by early Sunday afternoon. No warning. No warning. Nobody in the city notified anybody in the county who counted that this was going to happen. Residents not only flooded, many of us lost tens of thousands of belongings. It could easily have been saved if we'd been given 24 hours' notice. All the bulletins, as I noted, pointed toward Monday closure. Nothing mentioned about the Husman Road gate. The bypass culvert on Oak Road. Is there anybody here that doesn't know that that was plugged off? Is there anybody here? We have been bellyaching about it for 15 years. I don't know whose responsibility it is, Mayor. I don't know. Maybe the state's, but nobody would clear it out. It still hasn't been cleared out. They're putting a new one in, but it still hasn't been cleared out. And all they had to do was get a track-o in there. Basically, we had a slow motion flash flood. I personally, I told you about my personal flood wall, but that, I couldn't get the rest of it in place to protect myself. And all these other people don't have that luxury. And all these other people don't have the luxury of having extra floors to live on. It has been attempted to pass blame off on the county. Not correct, guys, I'm sorry. City is solely responsible for the operation of floodgates. You know that, and everybody else up here knows that. I questioned that, I said to four top management personnel. Nobody heard a thing. I realize that many in city government have relatively little flood wall experience, but ignorance is not an excuse. And I understand, everybody understands the definition of ignorance. Ignorance means you don't know. It doesn't mean you're dumb or you're less than smart. It means you don't know. But if you, if you are ignorant of the situation, you had all kinds of people you could have called on. Bob Harris is an engineer. He's my neighbor down the street. I'm an engineer. I've studied this system for 15 years. Byron Scott, 20 years. William Joyce, probably 20 years. We all know what to do in this situation. And if you tell me that you closed that floodgate to protect the city from the localized flood event, we've got another matter to deal with. The original scope of design of the flood wall was to protect the city from Ohio River flooding. No provision at all for localized flooding.
Thank you.
I hope none of you are thinking that.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Ronaldo, I mean, both of you.
I don't, I don't have any question, but I do want to ask the mayor, is it possible that we can set something up, be proactive on our end to meet with this gentleman, the other residents, and not wait for them to get back to us? Is that possible to do that?
I think we can have a, certainly I'm willing to set up a one-on-one meeting, but, you know, but, you know, I'm not interested in a, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a big meeting with a lot of people. But, but certainly I'll be glad to meet with you.
One-on-one, how about two or three on four? We've got people that know what's going on here, Mayor. I do. Bob does. William Joyce does. And we all have valuable input.
I don't, I don't think it has to be adversarial, but I do think that we may have some.
Well, it's pretty adversarial. I mean, when, when, when we talking about, you know, ignorance, I mean.
Do you know the definition of ignorance? Do you or not? It's not saying you're dumb or stupid or unsmart. You just don't know the system. That's ignorance. And hopefully, all the rest of y'all up there know that. That's not an insulting term.
I just think that it's, it's important because these people have lost a great deal.
Yes.
And, and to me, it feels as if, if we don't meet, if we don't talk, if we don't try to come to some solution, it seems to me that we're just saying to these folk, it's your problem, get over it. And I think that we have some responsibility in trying to bring some result. And I don't think it has to be adversarial.
Well, thanks. Thank you, thank all of you for listening. Thank you for being willing to address it. I mean, I've run into a lot of people who just don't want to talk about it because they're afraid they'll say the wrong thing. And there is no wrong thing here. City not rich, but you can certainly better afford than this gentleman here and all my friends up and down Badger Road. You can better afford to help us out to recover from this. And this is not on us. This is on the city for not giving us any warning and for really closing a gate that didn't have to be closed. That gate can be closed in 30 minutes, I think. You know, Mr. Jordan? Maybe, I mean.
No, it's a little bit longer than that, I believe, but I don't know the exact.
It's an automatic gate. All right, thanks for the extra time.
Sure.
Robert Harris?
I'll take less than three, brother. I'm going to drive the point home because Joe said my whole career was in engineering construction. Lived out there. I've taken out beaver dams all up and down through there. I know that basin where we live. So I think it's very important to understand a couple of things. This section right there, do you know when that was built? It was built when the flood will, flood wall was built. No sooner, no later. It was built because they knew that it was going to trap water right there without a doubt. There was nowhere for it to go. So when this fell at Oaks Road, the original flow was a bee branch out of our area. It went right through this gate right here. Right through that gate. So with this not letting water through and that gate closed, I think the city needs to acknowledge that they didn't understand what the flow of the water was and what needed to happen to manage it for our benefit. Because as Joe showed you on his charts, there was absolutely no threat to the flood when it flooded us. I'll stop right there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll now move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member's sole request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless a commissioner would like an item removed for separate discussion. If not, I'll go ahead and ask the city clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the May 13, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, receiving file documents, personnel actions, reappointment of William W. Cox Jr. and Mark Davis, and appointment of Leanne Ballinger to replace Brian Carner, whose term expired, to the Paducah Area Transit Authority. These terms shall expire June 30, 2029. A municipal order authorizing payment to Xylem Dewandering Solutions Incorporated for emergency pump rental in the amount of $45,232.4 during the April 2025 flood. Municipal order authorizing the finance director to pay Clean Earth Incorporated in an amount of $56,162.89 for the disposal of household hazardous waste and electronic waste collected during the city-county 2025 cleanup day. Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with Tyler Technologies to remove the Tyler Technologies MSP Fire Records Module and replace it with the Tyler Technologies Emergency Networking Module.
So move second. Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, we have two municipal orders. And the first one, I'll go ahead and ask the city clerk to please read, and then our city manager will cover it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Real Estate Donation Agreement, Deed, and All Other Documents Necessary to Donate Property at 2400 Brooks Stadium Drive to Paducah Independent District Board of Education for the Construction of a Softball Field and Stadium."
So moved second.
Mayor and commissioners, as, as you're aware, we began conversations with Paducah Independent Schools a while back in relationship to their softball field and their needs for a new, a new facility be constructed. We have come to an agreement with them that would allow us to transfer two acres of the property adjacent to Brooks Stadium. And kind of as you're visualizing, that would be right behind the parking lot area. It would allow for utility easements for the construction of that. And then they would work in concert also with the Brooks Stadium to ensure that there was no overlapping and, and no issues between the, once the facility is built and the Paducah Chiefs' ball season. Additionally, the superintendent and I have discussed, and the school system has agreed that as part of this agreement for us to transfer the property, they would construct the ball field no later than May of next year. And they would also address the blight situation over in Forest Hills of the old school and remove that as well. Should they not fulfill their end of the agreement as it's approved, there are some, some callback provisions that, that would ensure that those would take place or that we would get the property back. I answer any questions that you might have?
I'm excited for the school system and for the girls playing softball to have the new field. I think it's great.
All good? All good?
All good.
All right. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. And we'll ask the city clerk, please read the long-awaited on Main Street. So please go ahead.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Services with Paducah Main Street LLC for Specific Services."
So moved, second.
Phew, it's been a road to get here. David Wilkins is here, and if you all have any questions, you've seen the draft of the contract in your packet, and it just explains, um, very simply what in return for the amount of money you, you will receive in exchange for that, what your return on the investment would be. It's a five-year contract, but it's very clearly stated that each year you will negotiate the funding. Um, Main Street's expected to raise dollars in the community versus what your contribution will be, and the goal is at the end that it will be a totally independent organization.
Right, so, um, I'm really excited, uh, to get started, and I know it's been a long time coming. Um, I think that, uh, one of the greatest advantages our community has is our downtown.
Absolutely.
We hear that constantly, so, uh, anything that we can do to shore up downtown, to get, uh, empty buildings filled up, to get people, uh, to move downtown, and we got a lot of, a lot of people, uh, buying buildings, and we just need more, we need more activity, more action, so, so, super excited. Any other comments?
I think it's great, we're helping make Main Street more entrepreneurial. Hats off to you, David, you're an investor in downtown as well as, uh, uh, run a business downtown and all the people downtown that are trying to make it go, and it's just kind of good to take downtown to the next level, so.
I would, I would be remiss if on behalf of the city, we didn't thank David tonight, because without him, we would not be at this point, and he has been in my office continually doing things that he didn't get paid to do, you know? I was, I'm, I'm a city employee, he is not, and he's strictly working very diligently to get it across the goal. And, um, I, I would be remiss if we didn't say thank you.
Yeah, I agree, and David's a great example for others.
Absolutely.
Uh, for other people, you know, who have, um, had success, you know, moved back to the community or, in some cases, never left, but, um, you know, they get to a point in their careers and their life, you know, where they, you know, they want to give back and they want to make a difference in the community, and, and so we need more examples like you, so thank you. Okay, call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have two ordinances to adopt, both of which were read a couple of weeks ago, so, um, I'll ask the city clerk to please read the first one.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a professional services contract with HGR Incorporated, not to exceed one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for alternatives analysis for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, reevaluation of permit LRL two thousand eight, twelve sixty-seven A. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract for professional services with HGR Incorporated in the amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for alternatives analysis for the USAES, reevaluation of permit LRL two thousand eight, twelve sixty-seven A. This expenditure shall be charged to dredging account number DR zero zero four seven. So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions on this ordinance from a couple of weeks ago? We all good? Okay, I'd ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And I'll ask the city clerk to please re, uh, read the, uh, last ordinance, uh, which, um, is related to the first vote we just took.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance repealing chapter two, division fifteen, Main Street Department, Board of Directors of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance repeals chapter two, division fifteen, Main Street Department, Board of Directors of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky.
So moved, second. Questions? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So we have one ordinance, uh, to introduce, uh, tonight, and that's the twenty twenty-six, um, FY twenty twenty-six, uh, budget ordinance, where a lot of, uh, a lot of efforts gone on, gone into putting this together in the last six months. So I think the city, city manager wants to kick off here, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, to the Honorable Mayor George Bray, members of the Board of Commissioners, and the citizens of Paducah, it is our privilege to present the city of Paducah's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, covering the period from July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This budget represents our continued commitment to fiscal responsibility while investing in the services, infrastructure, and quality of life initiatives that make Paducah a vibrant community where people strive to reach their full potential. The FY twenty twenty-six budget reflects our dedication to the city's six core organizational values: solution-driven, customer experience, every person matters, action-oriented, fiscal responsibility, and personal accountability. These values guide our decision-making and resource allocation as we work to serve the citizens of Paducah. This budget was developed through a collaborative process involving all city departments and with guidance from the Board of Commissioners, and with careful consideration of community needs and priorities. The result is a balanced financial plan that maintains essential services, addresses infrastructure needs, supports economic development, and enhances quality of life for all city residents. The fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget reflects our commitment to prudent financial management while investing in key priorities established by the Board of Commissioners. The general fund, which is the city's main operating fund, has a projected revenue of nearly forty-nine million dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Occupational licensing, property taxes, and the insurance premium tax are the three primary sources of revenue for the general fund. The total proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six is a hundred and thirty-seven point eight million dollars when all funding accounts and transfers are considered. This comprehensive budget allows us to fund essential city services, capital improvements, and special init, initiatives that are aligned with the commission priorities. Our fiscal priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-six include: One, maintaining fiscal responsibility. We continue to uphold efficient financial practices and maintain our budget policy of ensuring that at least ten percent of our annual revenues are placed into our reserve fund. Two, infrastructure investment. The budget prioritizes ongoing maintenance of our facilities and infrastructure while planning for future facility needs. Three, economic development. We continue to support downtown revitalization, the tax, tax increment financing district, and initiatives to attract and retain businesses. Four, quality of life enhancements. Investments in parks, recreation, arts, and cultural amenities remain a priority to enhance livability for all of our city residents. Five, public safety. The budget maintains a strong support for police and fire services to ensure community safety. Debt service, economic development, and neighborhood redevelopment and infrastructure capital investment are all funded through the investment fund. This fund balance is derived by allocating one-half of one percent of our two percent occupational license fee. For fiscal year twenty twenty-six, this one-half of one percent allocation is projected to generate six point nine seven million dollars. The fiscal year twenty-six budget allocates resources to provide essential services and address community priorities. Major expenditure categories include: public safety, parks and recreation, infrastructure, economic development, capital investments, and community support. As presented, the fiscal year twenty-six budget supports the ten priorities established by the Board of Commissioners. These ten priorities are: quality housing, rental property occupancy permitting, downtown economic development, southside revitalization, growth, quality of life, city facilities, revenue equity, support for human and social services. And additionally, the budget supports continuous improvement in the areas of stormwater management, trails and bike lanes, and mental health awareness. While we currently enjoy financial stability, it is my duty and responsibility to provide information on anticipated future needs and the fiscal impact of those future considerations. With the implementation of the nine-one-one parcel fee, we have been able to relieve some financial pressure on the general fund. However, we still have issues such as stormwater and an aging facility portfolio that will require our intention. Coupled with a long-term financial commitment of the two recently bonded projects, the Paducah Sports Park and the Riverfront Development, there is a need to dialogue about how, in future budgets, we have the needed revenues to address these commitments and other continuing needs. In conclusion, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget represents a balanced approach to meeting current needs while planning for Paducah's future. By maintaining fiscal discipline, investing in infrastructure, supporting economic development, and enhancing the quality of life for our residents, we position our city for continued growth and prosperity. As we implement the budget, we remain committed to transparency, efficiency, and responsive service to our citizens. We will continue to monitor economic conditions, seek innovative solutions to our challenges, and adjust our strategies as needed to ensure the best use of public resources. I would like to express my gratitude to our finance team. Under the leadership of our Finance Director, John Perkins, and with the assistance of our Controller, Alder Kyle, and the whole finance team, the budget process would not run as smoothly as it does. Additionally, I'd like to recognize our Assistant City Manager, Michelle Smolin, and our whole executive leadership team for their dedication to being good stewards of the public dollars entrusted us. To you, Mayor Bray, and the full commission, thank you for your leadership and engagement during this process. Working together, we are building a stronger, more vibrant Paducah for our current and future residents.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, with that, I'll ask the city clerk to please read the, do the first reading of the budget ordinance.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the city of Paducah, Kentucky, annual operating budget for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, adopting the city of Paducah annual budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government at one million thirty-seven, one hundred and thirty-seven million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars, and summarized by fund as follows. General Fund, fifty-one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars. MAP Fund, three million, one hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Investment Fund, seven million, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. TIF Fund, one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. E nine-one-one Fund, three million, three hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. Opioid Fund, fifty-three thousand, ninety-six dollars. Court Awards, one hundred twelve thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars. Room Tax, one million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Debt Fund, five million, five hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars. CIP Fund, eleven million, nine hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Bond Fund, thirty-three million, seven hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Solid Waste Fund, eight million, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. Transient Boat Dock, four hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. Rental, one hundred and twenty, one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars. Maintenance, one million, ninety-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars. Fleet Lease Trust Fund, two million, eight hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars. Insurance, one million, three hundred thirty thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars. Health Insurance, four million, forty-five thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. Police and Fire Pension Fund, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars. And Other Trusts, eighty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars, for a total of one hundred thirty-seven million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
So moved. Okay, there, there you have the first reading of the ordinance. Any, any questions or thoughts from any commissioners? We've all been, uh, knee-deep in it. Uh, maybe not as knee-deep as, uh, as everybody else, so, John, you have something to say?
Well, I was just going to say, if you have any questions, I'm here. I think he covered it pretty well. Thank you all for investing your time in it. It, it was a big deal. It's always a big deal.
It's always a big deal. Every year, it's a big task, and, uh, we have to jump into a lot of numbers, and there's a lot of gnashing of teeth, and, uh, so, uh, I, I think, I think we did very well, so.
Indeed.
Appreciate you and the team, all the hard work.
Well, I thank you guys for your time and all your effort. It's a big deal.
Okay. We might save the hard questions for two weeks from now before we, before we vote, so.
Thank you, John.
Okay, uh, that's pretty much it for the night, uh, unless comments from city manager?
None this evening, Mayor.
Uh, comments from commissioners? Down this way.
I guess I will say one thing. I just wanted to say I appreciate those that made comments today. Um, I've once been in that position, and it takes a lot of courage to come up here and speak to us, you know, on a public platform, so I do appreciate you, and I appreciate you, Reverend or Commissioner Henderson, um, and I agree with you, we should have that conversation. I think it's, it's needed, because as we've seen, a lot of people have come to speak to us, so.
Comments?
Yes, Mayor, if at all possible, I'd like to see if I can be, uh, perhaps moved on the other end of Commissioner Wilson, because Commissioner Smith continues to harass me while I'm up here. Y'all don't see him, but he's harassing me.
Actually, that would suit me fine.
All right.
I'll gladly swap. I'll gladly swap.
Was your, was that your glad, last comment?
It was mine, yes.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.